So, good evening, everybody. I call to order the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. The time is 7:41. And there's a quorum of the Select Board present. Present, we have Mr. Joe McCrisky, Mr. Scott Carrera, Mr. Lucido, and our Vice Chair, Debra Roberts, and myself. If you are able to, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So, this is a special meeting just to close up some business, close our town meeting warrant, a special town meeting warrant, and a couple of other housekeeping items. So, we'll begin with item number two, to approve the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, NWRA, I&amp;I Local Financial Assistance Program loan. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Elizabeth Zaleski, Finance Director for the Town of Stoughton.
Hold the microphone a little closer.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Elizabeth Zaleski, Finance Director for the Town of Stoughton. I am here to present to the Board the information regarding the I&amp;I loan. The document before you that requires the Board's execution are the vote of the Select Board, the bond, the certificate for $1,500,000. The bond is for the town-owned water mains, voted and approved at the special town meeting on May 19th, 2025, Article Number Two, and will be funded by the Mass Water Resources Authority. The bond is a 10-year, interest-free, general obligation bond. The vote of the Select Board does not need to be read out loud, but remember, the Board must make a motion along with the following lines. I believe you all have that motion in your packet. So, from there, it's up to you.
Thank you very much. Before people ask questions, I just want to read that motion, and if somebody wants to then later make that motion, they can just simply say the motion that the Chair read. I move to approve and adopt the votes of the Board as prepared by Bond Counsel to the Town and presented to this meeting, which votes, among other things, approve the issuance of the bond to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority under the vote of the town meeting adopted on May 19th, 2025, Article Two, approve the terms of the related loan agreement and financial assistance agreement, authorizes the Treasurer to determine the terms of such bond, and ratifies, approves, and confirms all actions taken to date to carry out the related project and its financing. The formal terms of the vote prepared by Bond Counsel to the Town and approved by this motion shall be incorporated in the minutes of the meeting. Are there any questions to either Paul and Newt or to Ms. Zaleski?
No questions, but...
Go ahead.
I move to accept the bond note and the motion as read by Mr. Chairman.
Okay, this is motion to approve as it read. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Vice Chair Roberts, seconded by Mr. McCrisky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newt. The next item on the agenda is presentation of debt exclusion funding options for the elementary school project, also by Ms. Zaleski. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to the members of the Select Board and those in the audience. We are presenting the final borrowing. The borrowing has already been authorized. We just have to decide what are we going to do for the note. On two separate occasions, we had presented this to members of the public, and the members of the public voted for the 20 years at 27, yes, the 25-year, one, and the 30-year, two, at last week's meeting that we had with the Select, oh, excuse me, the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee voted 11 to 0 to 0 for the 20-year, 4.25 estimated interest. So, at this point in time, it's up to the Board to decide what they feel is going to be in the best interest of the community. As presented on multiple occasions, the 25-year note, I'm sorry, 20-year note is 96, 267, 572. The 25-year note is 107, 591, 761, and the 30-year note would be 26, 56, 559. And there is a short motion, or there should be a short motion in your packet for the Chair to read.
So, this has been, you've had the opportunity to present this at a public information forum and also at a meeting of the Finance Committee. I watched the meeting, the public information meeting online and was able to catch the Finance Committee meeting in person. I personally feel like I more or less know what I need to know at this point, but I'd like to offer members of the Select Board an opportunity to ask any questions they may have, and I'll start with, right side, we'll start with Mr. McCrisky, if you have any questions.
No, Mr. Chairman, I've watched all I need to watch, listened to the facts, I've listened to the public hearings, I've listened to the Finance Committee, so with that, I don't need to ask any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carrera, do you have any questions or comments?
Probably a couple of each. The vote of the town was based on a 30-year model.
The vote of the town was presented that it would be the committee who vetted the school building project, the documentation, everything, even at town meetings, said that the note would be between a 20, two, a 30, so somewhere in that range, 20 being the lowest, 30 being the highest, and it goes in five-year increments. So, it'd be 20, 25, or 30 would be the options that were available.
The information that was traveling around, because I live here, people were talking about the 30, because that's what everybody was saying, that it was going to be built on. Now, we're at a go-get-'em 20, which is higher. Can I finish?
Yes, sir.
Then you can defend it and stand behind whatever you want. I asked if something could be looked at, and I guess it fell on deaf ears, it didn't get looked at. I says, why can't we do 25 in the budget on the town side, 25 in the budget on the school side, because they're the big benefitters, and only burden the townspeople with 50% of it, because we did a 65, 35 for the fire station. Now, we're going to ask them, when they were all talking about that the 30 is good, we can eat that, yep, and now we're asked to saddle them with that. And I don't care what you get for input, 27 people said this, the 30 said that. It's the person that, when the bill comes in, is the one that's got to figure it out. I just don't understand why I didn't get a glimmer at, you know, spreading some of the debt instead of just 100% on the residents. And you can't hide behind that, that's 100% without even thinking. And don't tell me the MSBA says it has to be this, because Mr. Recupero said at a meeting, just so happens that I watched it, that he said, the MSBA doesn't really care how you pay it back, as long as it gets paid back. So, the decision lies here. That's why I didn't show up at the, let's learn how to pay for it. I'm just asking why we couldn't give the residents a fair shake, because when that fire station comes on and everything else is still on, it's going to be tough here.
Yeah, I mean, not...
Am I good to answer?
There was a ballot measure, and only one question can go on that ballot. People don't get it, multiple choice, it's a single ballot question. And between the recommendation of town meeting, honestly, ultimately, they decided they wanted 100% of a debt exclusion, and that is the vote, the Democratic vote of those people. It went to a ballot, and the people who voted on the ballot voted in the majority, that they also supported that setup. So, nobody was hoodwinked or railroaded, everyone had a say in this, and it went through a fully Democratic process.
Can I say something? The ballot question did not say how it was going to get paid for. All it said was a debt exclusion. There was no 100% there in the verbiage. Town meeting, they'd just vote to do it. We're the ones here now setting the term. That's our job, not town meeting, not the vote. If you wanted it in the vote, that's the way you should have done it. Other towns do it. But the vote just said a debt exclusion. That's it. So, right now, the Board can, you can say what you want, don't say that I'm trying to make problems out of it. Alls I'm just saying is, I want everybody to understand what it was built on, the working group, what they said. They came out of there, that's what they were saying. So, it's an obligation bond, which means, it's a general obligation bond, which means it can be paid back any way that any of us come together and say it. But I'm just saying, my side, I'm not going to change any minds, because the minds are made up. I'm just saying, I asked for something to be looked at, to give the residents a break instead of 100% noose around their neck. That's all I said. Nothing derogatory. I just asked, and it wasn't done. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification?
Yes.
On the recommendation for the notes, that's totally up to the Select Board. You have the option for the 20, the 25, or the 30. Nobody else makes that choice except for this Board, so I'd just like to be clear on that. And what you said earlier about the ballot votes, et cetera, that was true and accurate as to how the ballots were voted and the town meeting was voted?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the questions that are on the ballots are determined by statute, with the only thing that you can add in is a description of the project.
What, if the townspeople wanted to vote a split, like they did with the fire department, in the ballot vote for the fire department and in the town meeting votes, it said a 65-35 split, 65% debt exclusion and 35% to budget. And so, therefore, that's how all documentation read, and that's why that was a 65-35 split. Because this was not done that way, it debt excluded. We cannot go back and change it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrera, do you have any further questions?
Almost it.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Roberts, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have questions through you to our Finance Director. I did watch the information session, and I thought it was well-run, the information was very succinct, and I appreciate it. I appreciated the questions and the answers. However, one question was unclear, and maybe this is the same question that Mr. Carrera is asking, and it goes back to a question that Mr. Laurie had. And Mr. Laurie asked the question about new growth, new growth, using the new growth dollar amount, once it's certified, because you were perfectly clear, but I didn't hear your answer to him, why that wouldn't work. In my own mind, in my own being on FinCom, I believe the answer is, because of timing, it doesn't work. The timing that the DRI certifies, this note has to be in, because we are trying to do as best we can to time the market, and we know as inflation goes up, then interest rate goes up as well. So, and we're not, we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know if inflation is going to go down, thus, the interest rate is going to go down. But it still leave, left me with that one unanswered question. Was I right in my interpretation, why the new growth will not work in this case, to pay down on this note?
Unfortunately, your interpretation is not correct.
Okay.
And the reason that it's not correct is, new growth is not its own funding source. New growth is part of our taxation, so that is where new growth sits. It's not like we have state aid, which is a funding source, or local receipts, which is a funding source. Taxation is strictly taxation, and with an excluded debt, that is outside of our normal taxation. So, that's why, although the total value of new growth is in our total taxation, the cost of the excluded debt is a separate line in our budget and a separate line in our revenue sources. So, anything we allocate to the debt exclusion cannot be used for anything else except for the debt exclusion. Did that answer a question?
Thank you, thank you, Elizabeth. The second question I had is, so I'm leaning toward the 20-year note at 4% interest, and once we sign off on the note, we, the town, then that, there's no advance payment, you cannot pay down on that note advance, and I guess that would be our, the end result would be less than what your projection is on this table. Is that correct? It is what it is.
This is estimated costs as far as interest is concerned. The principal remains the same, but the interest is variable, based on when we go out to bid, what our bids are that come in. As far as paying down early, you really can't. There's only one avenue, that if we have a bond premium after our costs have been completed, we can take that bond premium and make an initial payment on the debt. But that will be a little bit down the line, once we get the information that we have. The bond documents are pretty interesting, so we just want to make sure that we're doing it correctly. That is one avenue that we can use to help pay down the debt. What we're also working on, I think it's very, very important to be clear on this, is that we have other funding sources, where our intention is not to borrow the full amount that's authorized. We already have $1.4 million that's coming off the bond that we will not be borrowing, because we've already funded part of it. And then additionally, we also have an estimated 2.3 to 2.5 million that we're waiting to come in from the final MSBA payment for the high school. Once that funding comes in, the intention will be to put an article before town meeting to take that excess revenue and apply it to this project to, again, reduce the bond.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Mr. Gito, do you have any questions or comments?
No, and I could have comments, but I think it's unnecessary.
Thank you. So, there were a couple of things, I just, I know, I feel like I've got a lot of information, but there were a couple of things I just wanted to highlight, that I think my expectations of what people, where people would go was different than what I actually saw. And I thought that there would be more of a movement towards the 25% bond than the 20 for a couple of reasons, and some of these I've described to you, but I just did the math quickly. And the increase that a individual household would have, so, let me start by saying that there's sort of two ways of measuring change, right? So, we're talking about dollars in this case. One is relative, you know, in that this went up 20%, compared to something else. And then there's absolute, you know, and so, where we're actually talking about the actual dollar increase. And it's important to talk about both, because, you know, 100% increase sounds like a lot, unless you're talking about the difference between $1 and $2. But if you're talking about the difference between $100 million and $200 million, it's obviously a lot bigger. So, in this case, just looking at the relative increase between 30 years to 25 years for an individual household, that's a 7% increase in the payment that you'd be making for the state exclusion. And to go to the 20-year from 30, it's closer to a 12% increase. And I thought, well, you get, like, it seems like you get not quite double, but, you know, you're sort of increasing, what seems to me like a lot, between 25 and 20 years. In absolute terms, though, you're talking about the difference between $20 and $36. So, this is, in absolute terms, perhaps not a tremendous amount of money, it's something that a lot of people could, would probably hardly notice, though that's not to say everybody was. Some people, we have to be honest, are much, much more, have to be much more frugal, have to be more thoughtful about these increases. And so, that's not any disrespect to people who, for whom this is a burden. But I do want to just sort of put it out, that will be the edges of the distribution, not the mean. For most people, this would not be a tremendous additional burden. But to take on that, so, anyway, I kind of thought that we get a big lift between 30 and 25, when I'm doing the math myself, but maybe a little bit less of a lift from 25 to 20. But when I look at the numbers of what we kind of gain as a community by making those changes, like, the picture really becomes really clear why people chose the 20, I think, generally speaking, because going from 30 to 25 years, we save ourselves about $13 million in interest. And, but going from 30 to 20 years, we save ourselves $24.5 million, which is like a 44% increase. I mean, we're coming close to, like, halving the price of this project in interest, at least, in a way that, you know, your increase of 20% ends up with almost a 50% reduction in the interest of this project. And so, I could see how that small move made really a gigantic shift in the way that, how much we went at paying. And that is a function of both, obviously, the time, but also the interest rate from 4.6 to 4, it's only 60 basis points, but over 30 years, that can, it really adds up, right? But I'd like to hear your take on this. You know, I'm not sure if you feel similarly, or if, you know, if the 20-year was also, seemed to you like the obvious choice.
No disrespect, but I don't think it is my recommendation that should come into play. It's very important that you work for the best benefit of your own community. What I would recommend, I don't think should have any influence on what the Select Board recommends and what they feel is best for the community.
I appreciate that. So, I don't have it, well, actually, I do have one more, one more question, and that will be it, and I'll let you go. When I was listening to some people talk about the rate that they'd be paying, sorry, the rate that they're going to pay, the increase, there was a question that kept on coming up as part of the debt exclusion. And it doesn't, at this point, it's kind of agnostic to which one we choose. It's true regardless. So, we're going to be paying, people are going to be paying some percent more than they normally would in the 20% increase. The question that was often, often came up was, if it's, if it's a function of the appraised value of my house, how much I pay? What happens if the appraised value of my house increases? And I've heard two versions of this question. One is, where does all the extra money go, which I think perhaps misses how that actually operates? But also, they're kind of curious, you know, about how the mechanics of that work. It seemed to be, there seem to be some misunderstandings about that. My understanding is that, though it's not really necessarily articulated anywhere, there is going to be a rate that people pay, and that's, you take the assessed value times that rate, that produces what they would actually pay. And that can fluctuate up and down, so that if their value goes up in their house, the rate would have to go down, because the payments are fixed. Is that correct, or there's some other way of assessing this payment over the course of the 20, 25, or 30 years?
The debt exclusion payment schedule will be fixed. We will get a report just like this, that says how much money is due each year that we have to pay, based on interest and principal. Now, these are estimates, and that's very important to realize, these are estimates. So, with the estimates, if you're looking at 68 cents versus 60 cents versus 56 cents, that's due to fluctuate up and down, and this is predicated on a $500,000 home. If you have a $1 million home or a $2 million home, then yes, your contribution will be more. And when we do our, when we do our tax rate classifications, that will say when your property goes up, property goes down. I think historically, for the last few years, we've had a lower tax rate, and so, it's going to fluctuate. I can't make guaranteed cost, because everything is estimated. And goes up, it goes up, you have more commercial industrial in town, that can make a big difference. You have more properties that come into town, single-family homes, apartment buildings, et cetera. Those can make a big difference as well, because the more properties we have, the more the burden gets shared, if that makes any sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, with that, unless anybody has any further questions, we do have a motion that's been provided, but we first have to decide on 20, 25, or 30 years. The motion itself reads, I move that the Select Board authorize the Treasurer to enter into the following estimated debt exclusion repayment plan for the Town of Stoughton, and then it's Option 1, 2, or 3. Is there a motion on this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we accept the 20 years at 4%. Oh, let me read it from our packet. That's basically what it is.
It's the first page?
First page, thanks. I move that the Select Board authorize the Treasurer to enter into the following estimated debt exclusion repayment plan for the Town of Stoughton. Option 1, 20 years at 4%.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Vice Chair Roberts and seconded by Mr. Gito. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? I'm sorry.
Abstentions?
Yeah, abstentions, thanks. The word wouldn't come to me. Any abstentions? None. Okay, so, it sounds like, if I read it quickly, four to one, in favor of a 20-year, 4% bond.
Thank you very much for your approval on these matters. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. This is pursuant to general law, Chapter 139, Section 1 through 3B, with respect to the property located at 797 Washington Street, parcel ID 0543920, map 054, lot 392. As is our custom, Vice Chair Roberts will be overseeing this portion of our agenda. Any questions or comments, please make through her as the acting chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, first, I'll read into the records. The legal notice of hearing, GLC 139, nuisance property hearing, 797 Washington Street, Stoughton. Stoughton, Mass., parcel ID 0543920. MAP 054. Lot 392. By Constable Certified Mail, return receipt requested and first-class mail. Verde Costas, Demetrius Trustee, Bostonia, Nominee Trust 235, Adams Street, Quincy, Mass. 02169. Please be advised that the select board be, will be conducting a hearing pursuant to GLC 139, Section 1, et SEQ, with respect to the property located at 797 Washington Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, parcel ID 0543920. MAP 054. Lot 392, which is the property. You are receiving this notice because you have been identified as the owner of record. Time and date of hearing, September 9, 2025. Place of hearing, Grace, Great Hall Select Board Meeting Room, 3rd Floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072. In accordance with GLC 139, Section 1-3B, the select board will consider and determine whether the property constitutes a burnt, dilapidated, or dangerous building or other structures, and whether to declare a property a nuisance or dangerous. The Board of Selectmen may then make an order judging it to be a nuisance to the neighborhood or dangerous, or prescribing its disposition, alterations, or regulation, including that it be raised. If you have any questions or wish to obtain further information about this public hearing, you may contact the town manager's office at TWNMGR@stoughton-ma.gov or 781-341-1300, extension 9211. Sign. Thomas J. Coulter, Town Manager. I accept a motion to open the public hearing, please.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? Oh, did you?
Yes.
It was unanimous decision, all yes, to open the public hearing. We start with any questions, or you want to give some context. I defer to Mr. Tisdale before we start asking questions.
Sure. Thank you very much. Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager. I can give you a very quick overview of this. As you mentioned, this is a public hearing to determine if the structure is unsafe, dangerous, or a public nuisance. In order to do that as a board, you have to look at the evidence in front of you from town officials and decide if that evidence is sufficient to make that determination. The evidence in front of you are letters from the building commissioner, also referencing the fire department, or various inspections. There was three dates. One was September 24th, I'm sorry, September 28th, 2024, March 25th, 2025, and April 7th, 2025. In the letters, there's, they were all slightly worded different ways, but essentially, the summary of what the issues are are structural issues with the foundation walls or the sidewalls of the building, fire, and various types of fire code issues throughout the building. For example, there was a lot of, I think the pictures I just reviewed showed a lot of stuff inside the building where if there was a fire, it would be tough for the fire department to fight. Inside the building, there's also issues with the fire escapes and things of that nature. The letters appear to be addressed to the property owner with an understanding that the property owner can reach out and address those issues. I don't believe the town has heard back from the property owner. The property owner also got a certified mailing about this hearing. And I don't believe there's anybody here, or I could be wrong, but I don't believe there's anybody here for, for that. So at this point, I think if I'm the board, I would discuss the evidence in front of you, see if you agree or disagree with the building commissioner and their findings. If you agree it's a nuisance, an unsafe structure or dangerous, and then you would have to, if you did agree with that, you could issue an order for the structure to be raised in accordance with the building inspector's letters.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. I asked if
Mr. Tisdale.
Mr. Tisdale, I'm sorry.
Let the minutes say, Mr. Coulter.
How are you changed? I asked if Mr. Demetrius is in the audience or representative? With there being none.
There's nobody online either.
Okay, thank you. Then I, to the select board members, do you have any questions, comments for, oh, I see, Mr. Crower.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Through you to the Assistant Town Manager. Is it, to my recognition, I was always told that the fire chief is the top guy, then the building inspector. I don't know where the Board of Selectmen comes into this. I mean, we have the power to maybe enter it in the warrant like the town manager wants to do, to put it out to bid. But if this thing is as bad as it is, we should have had a letter from the fire chief standing on what his state statute allows him to do. That would have backed it up no problem here and probably cut this thing short. But we have a captain who is with Mr. Erickson. He really can't make the last decision. But you can, you can tell me otherwise unless we get something from Attorney Winner that says that, I know Jack can say it's unsafe, but he's got to be in connection with the fire chief to take it down. And then we should have had a letter from him stating that he's, he wants this. I know if it catches fire, that whole block is in jeopardy. So I don't, I don't want any firemen in there trying to save it, but it's going to hurt other individuals, so.
I can, I can just elaborate on that.
Thank you.
Scott. I, I actually talked to Brian Winner, too, the town council, on this. And he educated me on this process because I never went through this process myself, just on a high level. And essentially, the process does go through the building commissioner one way or another, with evidence from the fire department. The fire department was, was in these inspections with the building commissioner. And the power goes through the commissioner and then through the select board. Your select board is, is the authority that will make this determination. And that's it. If there was a board of health issue, that's also an avenue to go with this. But this is more of a building commissioner slash select board issue, according to our town council.
I'd like to also just add that the section that's referenced in the agenda, section of mass general law, Chapter 139, Section 1, I'll just read, read, it's kind of short. I'll just read it real quick. Section 1, orders judging burnt or dangerous buildings, structures, or vacant land to be nuisances. Notice, hearing, and service of copy of order. Section 1, the alderman or selectman in any city or town may, after written notice to the owner of a burnt, dilapidated, or dangerous building, or other structure, or his authorized agent, or to the owner of a vacant parcel of land, and after a hearing, which we're having, make him record an order judging it to be a nuisance to the, to the neighborhood or dangerous, and prescribing its disposition, alteration, or regulation. The city or town clerk shall deliver a copy of the order to an officer qualified to serve civil process, who shall forthwith serve and attest to copy thereof in the manner prescribed in Section 124 of Chapter 111, and make return to said clerk of his doing thereof, thereon. And Section 3 of that same chapter, 139, it mentions abatement or removal of nuisance by alderman or selectman. Section 3, the alderman or selectman shall have the same power to abate and remove any such nuisance as is given to the Board of Health or town under Section 123 to 125, including, inclusive of Chapter 111. So that, I think that allows this board to make that determination, that it is a nuisance, that it's dangerous, and that it has to be raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. It troubles me to have to agree with this, as some other people have wanted to try to redo the theater and to bring it back to life. There's so many ships that have sailed on this project. And the thing that keeps bringing us back to the dock is the fact that the building has been deteriorating every year. Although we try to put a, some positive spin on it, the letters are quite documented by the building inspector, dating back more than a couple of years, of trying to get this place to at least not be a risk to public safety officials and to the public. We have all been presented with a copy of the pictures, which basically shows it as a dumping ground. I don't know what's in the boxes all over the place, but there's chairs, there's just junk everywhere. That doesn't look like a building we could do much with. It's been deemed to be unsafe, a fire hazard, a danger to our public safety officials. The property owner has had several opportunities to come to try to talk with the town to mitigate the problem, and like tonight, has failed to show up or do anything. So we've got to think of the public safety officials, if their place goes up, like Scott said, you know, it's, it's time that we come and make a tough decision on what we've got to do here. So it troubles me. I wish I didn't have to vote for this, but I will be voting for it.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. I'll turn to my left, Mr. Gito. Any questions or comments, please?
Yes.
Mr. Gito.
Thank you. When was the last time that folks entered this building? From the town? Mr. Tiso?
The day I have on a letter is April 7th, but I don't know if that's the date that the inspection was, was done.
April is, what, five months from now?
Correct.
Has, have the boxes been removed, or have they not?
I'm not aware if the boxes have been removed.
The issue, as I read it, is that the unsafe condition is due to its being considered an improper use as a warehouse, and that there is no, there are no fire protection systems within the building.
I have a letter as April 7th, but I don't know if that's the date that the inspection was done.
Excuse me, is that?
Who is that?
Who's talking, please?
It kind of sounded like me.
Is that Erickson?
It sort of sounded like me, like what I just said. Yeah.
That was feedback.
Okay, we have a phone number online that ends with 21. You are currently not muted. And just curious just to know who you are. Okay. I'm going to mute you, and we're going to continue on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to Mr. Gito, you were asking the question, when was the last time, and then?
I didn't hear what.
He was referring to muting that line that's on, on, that made that comment.
Do we know who that person is?
They wouldn't identify themselves. I don't think they intended to be heard.
Thank you. If, if we don't know what the current conditions are, if the boxes are not there, if there's no, nothing inside the building, according to the building inspector, I mean, the, the building may not look nice, but it's not, wouldn't be considered a fire hazard. And which is the reason that it is considered a, a building that, that needs to be dealt with. And if we don't know what, what the conditions are now, I'm not prepared to say that, that the building should, should be demolished, or whatever we choose to do with it. I mean, and if, if the, if the box is still there, it would seem to be an awful lot easier to, to make the building safe by renting some U-Hauls and some people and getting the boxes out of the building. It doesn't seem like that's a condition as it's presented to us at the present time that requires the building to come down.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Anything else? I wanted to defer to, okay, wanted to defer to Mr. Tisdale, because can you declare that, to be the only reason that it is hazardous? Because in that paragraph that says in accordance with GLC, goes on to say, consider and determine whether the property constitutes burnt, dilapidated, or dangerous building or other structure, and whether to declare the property a nuisance or dangerous. So that line says is referring to the property itself, so the real property, not the, the content interior to the building. Can you please clarify that?
All I can read is the, what's in the letter from the building commissioner.
Yes.
There's three letters. Mr. Gito's right on point with, with that part. And then there's another part of a, of a letter that says a warehouse fire load in this type of building, in the condition of the building, large structural cracks on two exterior walls in a downtown area such as this can have catastrophic, catastrophic consequences. So I think the use and this, this stuff inside is one thing, and then you've got the structural issue and whatever the fire code issues are for the building.
And that would be, Mr. Kaby, did you have a question, a follow-up? So I heard two things, but go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. If you'll bear with me. I'm not a huge fan of reading things aloud, but at the same time, I think people should hear these letters. They'll be, they're obviously public documents, will be made available when they're attached to the minutes. But they go, the first letter that we have currently goes back to August 28, 2024. So it was a year ago. And this was written by Jack Erickson, our building commissioner. And he writes, Mr. Veracostas, this letter is to inform you that I have deemed your building a dangerous and unsafe structure. On March 19th of this year, so it's 2024, you, myself, Assistant Building Inspector Varner, and Captain Rush of the Stoughton Fire Department toward the building. The building was being used as a commercial storage building. A warehouse storage building is not allowed in the central business, business district for good cause. A warehouse fire load in this type of building, and the condition of the building, a large structure, cracks on two exterior walls, as Mr. Tisdale read, in a downtown area such as this, can have catastrophic consequences. I told you at that time, the use of a warehouse needs to cease, and the building needs to be emptied. In 2020, a situation very similar to this, an illegal warehouse happened in downtown Los Angeles, and 11 firefighters were injured. On Thursday, August 22nd, after noticing that there, there seemed to still be large amount of boxes in, in storage, myself, self, Health Inspector Lee, and Stoughton Fire Chief Carroll. in, in storage, myself, self, Health Inspector Lee, and Stodden Fire Chief Carroll entered the building to conduct an inspection. The building is still being used as a storage warehouse, and there is no work, working fire alarm system. Therefore, I therefore am taking the following steps. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 143, Section 6, I have deemed the building a dangerous building and unsafe structure, and placard it as such. This is your formal notification of the process in accordance with law. Be aware that under Chapter 143, Section 7, if you do not take immediate steps on this issue, the town can and will take all steps allowed by law, including condemning and demolishing of the building. This danger, dangerous situation needs to end now. Signed by Jack Erickson. That was a year ago, a little bit over a year ago. The next letter we, we have in our package is from March 25, 2025, also from Jack Erickson, our building commissioner. Mr. Veracostas, this letter is, is in regards to the attached letter, which was sent to you on August of 2024. In that letter, you were made aware of the seriousness and the dangers of the illegal use of your building being used as a warehouse. You have not made this office aware of any steps taken to remove the large fire load in the building, or at the, at the minimum, install a working fire alarm. Your blatant disregard for the safety of, of the Stodden first responders, your tenants, and your neighbors is extremely disturbing. This is to inform you that under Mass General Law, Chapter 143, Section 7, the town of Stodden will take all steps allowed by law to alleviate the town of this dangerous situation. It's followed by a letter on April 7. Mr. Veracostas, this is a little bit longer. I'm hesitant to read it all, just want to make sure it's relevant. Dear Mayor Veracostas, Mr. Veracostas, as was set forth in correspondence dating August 28, 2024, a copy of which is enclosed, during your recent inspections up to and including March 18, 2025, I have observed numerous and significant building codes violations regarding the above referenced structure at 797 Washington Street. In my August 2024 order, you are made aware of the seriousness of the dangers of the, of the illegal use of your building being used as a warehouse. You have made this office, you have not made this office aware of any steps taken to remove the large fire load in the building, or at the minimum, install a working fire alarm. Your blatant disregard for the safety of Stodden first responders, your tenants and the neighbors, and your neighbors is extremely concerning to me as a public safety official. Based upon my findings and out of concern for the members of the town, town's police department, fire department, and other first responders who may be asked to respond to one or more calls at this property, I have determined that the structure is dangerous to live, to life or limb, within the meaning of general law, Chapter 143, Sections 6 through 14, and 780 CMR R116. In particular, the structure would be, would be especially unsafe in the event of fire. You are hereby ordered to remove the structure, to remove the structure or make it safe by 12:00 PM on the day following your receipt of this correspondence. Additionally, due to the seriousness of this violation and the risk of life, life safety, I am hereby revoking the certificate of occupancy, effective immediately in accordance with 780 CMR R111 dot four. You must therefore vacate all persons from the structure immediately, and not allow occupancy of the structure unless and until the violations set forth herein are cured. Your failure to comply with this order may result in the town convening a board of survey, the select board declaring the condition of the structure an emergency, and/or the town securing the structure or raising it and placing a lien to secure the town's costs and attorney's fees in accordance with the general law, Chapter 143, Sections 8 and 9, which states that if the, quote, the owner, leasing or mortgage in possession continues his or her refusal or neglect, the inspector shall cause it to be made, sorry, shall cause it to be made, it's safe or taken down, or to be made secure. Order. As noted above, you are hereby ordered to remove the structure and/or make it safe by 12, 12:00 PM, it kind of, kind of goes on, just re- restate that. You have a right to repeal, to appeal this order in accordance with general law, Chapter 143. And so now it brings us to now August, or this was another letter was sent for a hearing in September, the hearing we're currently asked at, where he was once again made aware the select board will be conducting a hearing, that, that this is your notice, and that we're talking about this. I, I, it's a lot to read. I apologize for, I don't want to feel like, I don't want to be wasting anybody's time here. But we have done everything we can, and we, our building commissioner, Mr. Erickson, has done everything he possibly could to tell these people that you have an unsafe structure. It is a tinderbox with no fire alarms and no sprinkler system in the middle of our downtown. And, and a fire will be catastrophic. And it sounds like the owner does not seem to care. He's not here to, to speak to it. He has not responded to, as far as I can tell, any of these letters in writing. He hasn't made an effort to remedy any of this. You know, I don't think that, I don't think waiting around to try to figure out, you know, can we all rent a U-Haul and go in? It's a private property with not, with no occupancy permit. We can't go in there and clear it out. And we've asked the only person who can to do it for a year now, and he has not done it. And I mean, honestly, like, you know, I applaud everyone's patience in this, because I just feel like, if someone's going to die, you know, this is really serious. If anything happens down there, our whole downtown is going to be, is going to be on fire. It's going to be horrific. And the idea that, you know, well, well, you know, maybe it's not that bad, we can do something about it. I don't, I feel like we've gotten way past that point. Madam Vice Chair, I apologize for taking so long, but I appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to open it up to the citizens.
Before you do that.
Oh, yes, just one second, Mrs. Walsh. Mr. Gito.
I, I applaud the, the chairman's characterization of the issue. The question still remains, is the building in that state now? If it is not, then we are going to take action, and we're going to go to town meeting and ask for a million dollars to tear the building down. And then the property owner has the building that's torn down, and we have torn it down for him. And I presume that in that process, we are also putting that a lien on that property, I would imagine. But it's still not our property. And so I'm wondering whether or not that our saying, oh, well, we have, we have to tear it down, is the thing to do. The property apparently is up for sale, as I understand it. And it may have a very high price on it, and it may come down some when the building is down. I have no idea. My, my simple question is, what is the condition of the building now? Because we're basing our decision on pictures from a year and a half ago, or a year ago. And, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a hard thing to know that answer. I called the town manager this morning to ask that same question. Never got a return call. Somebody could have just knocked on the door and gone in and found that out. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to not do something. I guess I'm just trying to figure out how to do it. I mean, if, if we need to make the building safe, and there's nothing in it now, then we don't have a fire load to deal with. And, I mean, I don't, I don't think that I'm trying to put everybody at risk. I'm trying to just find out what the facts are.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky, and then Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The chairman just read all the letters going back to 2024. Very clearly stated the safety issues, the structural integrity of the building, the lack of any movement by the property owner up until that time. And now we have the final letter. So I can't see how the previous speaker would not know the condition of the building when it's clearly stated in the letters that go back to 2024. No official letter responding to the building inspector saying that anything had changed. There's a public hearing scheduled for tonight that the owner of the building is not here for to tell us what he's done. I think it's very clear, the condition of that building, and, and the action that this board has to take, that in the event that there was a fire in that building, we don't know the condition. We don't have access to the building right now to know if it's any different. But the property owner has had every opportunity to respond to the building commissioner, and hasn't done it. So I don't know about anybody else, but if God forbid a fire started in that building, I don't want to see it put anybody else at risk. And if we don't take action, you know, we're as guilty as the person who caused the problem. You know, if this person wants to come before it, if we have the order, and he can come up with a plan to rectify the situation, maybe that's a different story. But we don't have him here to make that comment. But I think as it stands now, we need, and I think we have a responsibility, you know, to our public safety responders, you know, to make sure that they're safe, and the people that have adjoining businesses to that structure are safe. Right now, we have no evidence that they are. So I think it's a very simple decision to make, and if something changes down the road, we come back to a meeting, and we listen to the building inspector, and all those folks involved, and we can make an informed decision. But I think we're making, we need to make an informed decision tonight, you know, that protects anybody that goes near that structure.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. I'll hear from Mr. Chairman, then to our citizens, and then we'll close the public hearing, then we'll deliberate, and I'll accept a motion. So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I apologize, and I, and I don't want to keep the, the public waiting. They have comments as well they'd like to make. I'll simply just say that, that we're not only basing our decision, at least I'll say, I'm not basing my decision only on photographs that may be a year, or six to a year, you know, six months to a year old. I'm basing on the fact that that is the, that's the last pictures we have, and, and the owner has not provided any evidence that anything has changed, given ample opportunity to do so, has, has, has essentially left that question for us to just ponder, and, and maybe one day we'll be able to find out what's going on in there. And hopefully it isn't because we, we've just burnt down half of our town. So I, I, I think that we, the absence of any proof that, that the, which we've asked for, that, that the conditions are different than what we last observed, is honestly enough. We have a public hearing now. Come here and tell us. No, like, no, it looks totally different now. It's all cleared out. He's not here. He knew about it, you know? And I, and I, we can't just like, let somebody pretend like they, like, sort of stick their head in the sand, not answer any questions, and we say, well, I guess we'll just never know. I guess we can't, there's no way to figure this out. No, we asked, did you, is the, the building like it looked like, is it the same as it was the last time we saw it? No answer. Okay. We're going to, we're going to have to tear down the building if there's, if it's like it was before. Is it still like that? No answer. So we know, I, I feel like we know plenty to be able to infer what our application is here. So I, I, once again, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with you 100%.
May I say one more thing?
Yes, please. Is it new information, Mr.?
Yes, well.
Because I wanted to close the public hearing, and then we can deliberate.
I do understand that.
Okay.
All I was asking is that we find out what the current conditions are. We are going to have another meeting next week. And we could find out between now and then what the conditions are within that building in terms of the boxes and whatever else is there. I mean, there's a whole lot of stuff there. There's no, no question about it.
Thank you, Mr. Gito.
Then we could vote on it next week. And I have no, I'm, look, I'm not, I'm not saying that this guy is a cooperating person or a wonderful person. I mean, he might be great to his family, but he certainly isn't necessarily doing the things that the town would want. But I'd like to, I'd like to be able to vote based on what the current situation is, and not on something six months ago or a year ago. I mean, I think that's part of our job.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Now, with that said, to the citizens, Miss, we left off Mrs. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. Anyone who grew up in a Stodden has fond memories of the theater, at least three generations of my family. Over 10 years ago, when the attempts were made to save the theater, I supported those attempts. I really think I did pay dues. And we've just discovered that there's no fairy tale ending for this. Nobody's going to swoop in and save the theater. We have to look at the conditions. I was actually in the building over 10 years ago. There was water infiltrating through the walls to the extent that the plaster had fallen off the cement. The roof was leaking. I don't know if the facade of the building is cement or plaster, but parts of that have fallen onto the pavement. When you go by the theater, you can see graffiti on the second and third level. That means young people, because I don't think people my age or your age are doing graffiti, are climbing up on that building. It's a shame that the owner hasn't done something. But I do have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Walsh.
On the warrant, it says 797 through 809. So is that more than the theater? Or that's just the address of the theater?
So, Mrs. Walsh, I believe the section of the agenda we're on now is regarding taking action on the property. We're going to discuss the warrant article next, at our next agenda item.
I know, but the public isn't invited for that part.
Oh, okay. I see your point why you want to ask.
I'm just wondering, I mean, I am a town meeting representative.
Yes, you are.
For over 40 years. And the address here and the address on the agenda aren't the same. So I'm just wondering if we're talking about a block, or are we talking about just the cinema? Just the theater?
The legal notice that I had, oh, I was going to refer to the legal notice.
I just believe that these buildings are connected. They're all connected. They share common walls, you know, that separate them, and it's, that's most likely those numbers that are in that block. You know, because as you know, how the Avocados building is a part of it.
And I, I know also, at least we in Stodden know, that a vacant building in that kind of condition, buildings in around the square that aren't in primo condition. I mean, we've had a fire where a firefighter was killed in this area. It's now the parking lot in the rear of Town Hall. Somebody died there. There were other people living in that area that also could have been killed. So this isn't just a myth, this isn't a threat. The fact is that in real life, bad things happen. And when bad things happen, neighbors get hurt and first responders do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh.
Madam Chair, when you get a minute, and you can fit me in, I did, I've been trying to get your attention for one last.
Okay.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
Mr. Anzavino, and then if anyone else has a question in the audience and online.
I do. Peter, may I press phone?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, or Vice Chair. John Anzavino, 25 Ross Ave. If I remember correctly from the letters you read, said the last time they were in the building was March, when they went in and nothing had been done. So nothing had been done since August of '24, and they were in the building in March of this year, and nothing had still been done. And as, as been noted, you've had no response from the business owner. I think it's safe- I think it's safe to say that if he hasn't responded, he hasn't done anything, or he will let you know. I think you've made it clear to him, you're looking to do as, as far as you can go legally, up to and including taking the building down. And my, my question is, and not on the warrant, in the letters, the first letter referenced one address, but in a couple of the letters, it references the 797-807. So, that was my question, is are they looking to take just the theater and leave the rest of the block? Is that, and that would include the restaurant that's now operating, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they...
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm just wondering, is, you know, obviously, this affects an active business.
So, the only...
In businesses.
The only part of that property that, that has an issue is just the theater. However, if I'm not mistaken, that entire block is actually just one parcel.
I think it was two. I think it's half the block unless it's changed.
Yeah.
It used to be half the block was one owner, and the other half was another owner.
Yeah, so I think it's sometimes the parcels referenced, and sometimes like the full block, and then sometimes the, just the theater. Certainly, the article that we're, that is being inserted is only related to the theater. This order is only related to the, however we vote, would only be related to the theater.
And through you, if, if Mr. Tisdale could answer, I know, I know you've, it's been stated, but you have an estimate for this demolish, to demolish the building. And I was just curious, is that all they're looking at? I mean, you're going to put a business out, right? Avocados would be gone. And does it affect the businesses next door at all when they're going through this demolition? Are they going to have to close it all? I'm just curious. I mean, I'm all for, I'm all for going forward with this, because I think, based on the letters you've had, and without any response, it's quite clear the owner has no, no regard for, for the town. So, I was just curious how it's going to affect...
Yeah, who knows?
...the businesses that are there, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a good question.
Either Mr. Tisdale, or...
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Mr. McCrisky.
Yeah, I mean, I...
And you have one?
Think I can generally answer the question. I think all the businesses surrounding that would be affected one way or another during a demo. They share common walls and things like that, so obviously, they would be affected. I don't know exactly how, or what the timeframe would be. I think once we hire a professional to guide us through this process, we get a better understanding of what that would be.
Then, just one follow-up to that, if you will.
Yes, Mr. Anzavino.
If you've got an estimate to do the demolition, was there a timeframe involved with that estimate?
The quote was just general to give us an idea of what the article would be. We got three quotes. They range from about, don't quote, don't quote me on the quotes, but about 250 to about 650. And I believe the understanding was, go up to a million in case there's environmental issues, and we have to do a Phase 1 environmental assessment, things of that nature.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anzavino. Are there any...
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Madam Vice Chair, very quickly, I just want to make a point, because we seem to try to give another, another break to the property owner. Letters have been here, document several years of no action, that nothing has been fixed. We've got a public hearing. The property owner is not here to tell us what he's done. I'm not ready to give another delay in preventing this action to a person who has consistently, including tonight, failed to respond to the town of Stoughton in any manner, whether through the building inspector, by numerous letters, or to this board, by not even recognizing to be here, or sending a representative to let us know what he's done. So, I'm ready to vote now. If they come back, and they want to say we've done some things by then, then we can maybe do something different, or take further action. But, tonight deserves immediate attention, in my opinion. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrera, or should we just close the, there's some people online, and they may want to ask a question. I just...
I just got...
Okay, Mr. Carrera, before we go back to the citizens, online.
The four, the, the letters that we have from Jack Erickson state that something's going to be done. It falls on this board to make the decision. Whatever decision we make, he has the right to privilege, which means he has the right to appeal. So, that's on him. If he doesn't do it in whatever time, timeframe there is under the law, or whatever, to respond to us, then it'll be fixed. That's how I look at it. So, whatever we vote here tonight, is either, either the owner's going to fix it under right of privilege, or what we did will fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. And it does say in the letter that he has the right to appeal. So, online, are there any questions?
Yeah. Peter Vantresco.
Aye.
Hello?
Oh, that's Mr. Peter Vantresco, I...
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you, but it's very faint. Yes?
Okay, I'll get, I'll get close to the phone.
Oh, perfect. Much, much better.
But anyways, I like, okay, I'd like to address a couple of questions, Mr. Anzavino. Yes, Avocado, and the building to the right of that, all of them, this is about to shut down, because they all have common walls, and the theater's like, two or three stories higher than the street building, so, yeah. Safety-wise, they have to shut down. Now, and plus, the town's going to take this land, they should buy all the property he owns on Washington Street. It has one big parcel, then we got more land to work with to do something bigger than just taking down the theater, or put some kind of an apartment building in. And the other health issue in there is a severe, severe mold. And that's got to be real bad, because it's been building up all these years. So, that's another thing to look at. And the building is deteriorating under the theater group. It was in better shape before they got in there. Now, the back wall, I did a lot of work on the buildings that are attached to the theater on Washington Street in Avocados, near the back. All right. The corner of the theater facing Wyman Street, we got that driveway coming in, this is going back 15 years. The bricks are ready to fall off them, and so deteriorated, there's no foundation they were holding at this. There is more damage to that building than people think there is. So, that's, that's another situation. So, uh, let's see, where was I working? Okay. Yeah, okay, I guess I addressed them. Buy all the property, because if you take it by eminent domain, you're going to have to pay a market value, which you think. So, maybe you should go make a deal with a guy and buy, buy everything he has. Okay, I guess I said all I wanted to say. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Vantresco. Any other questions or comments online? If not, I'll accept a motion from this board to close the pub...
Oh, I'm... I have a comment or a question.
Okay, please cite your name and your address, please.
Sure. Justine Penny, 775 Central Street. My first question is, since this has been going on for quite some time, has the town collected any money for fines with this property owner?
Mr. Tisdale, did you want to respond by saying, "We don't know," or...
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that question. I can check, though.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we haven't, we haven't fined or collected any that we know of right now for anything in this property, okay? My next question is, if we pay as town to tear down this theater or the whole block, are we going to be in a rush to just let anyone build whatever they want there, because it will be another eyesore of a vacant lot, like we put up with a hole in the town for that apartment complex that took so long to build? That we're just going to let anything come through and be built in the town? Or, do you guys already have something in mind that we're pushing through to help another builder out, to push this along?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your first name?
It's the same person, Justine.
Ms. Christine, oh, Ms. Justine. I believe Mr. McCrisky wants to respond to that, your question.
Thank you.
And maybe this will do it, Madam Vice Chair, thank you, is that it won't be like the hole in the ground, because we will have some say. The hole in the ground was owned by private developers who just kept stalling, for whatever reason, I don't know. But, it, it was, this would be a different project, because we would have skin in the game, because we would have a lien on the property to make sure that we get back the money for any demolition. So, I don't, I haven't heard a thing out of anyone. What we have before us tonight is just an unsafe building that has the opportunity to hurt somebody. It hasn't been talked about something for development. We don't have anybody involved. There's nothing right here, this is just getting a building that's unsafe to be acted on due to the inaction of the people that own it. And that's what this is all about tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Justine, wait just one minute, please. Chairman, you wanted to make a comment to Ms. Justine?
Yeah, I just wanted, first of all, there's, as part of this hearing, but also as part of any articles that may, may or may not be inserted, that we might go over next, there's no taking by eminent domain. This is still private property. This order is for demolition. But, but the town, really, honestly, I mean, we might be able to have some influence, but at the end of the day, it is private property, and the owner could develop anything he wants, or leave it a vacant lot, or sell it, or do a number of other things. The thing is that if, if we want him to pay the bill for this, and if he does, then great. If he doesn't, then we'll pay it, and we'll put a lien on his property. At least, that is, you know, what we're, what we will ultimately be asking for. So, if he sells it, then we are made whole. But, but there's no, I mean, that I'm aware of, there's no specific plan, and I'm not even sure, if there was one, how we could probably execute it. It's a private property. Hopefully, that helps. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I just have a follow-up to that.
Yes.
Okay. With it being private property, and thank you for explaining that, and that we're going to pay to demo, demo it, and that you said that we would put a lien on it, and we would pay, let's say, I know it wasn't to quote the person on the quote for the $1 million, let's say, to demo it. So, the town could potentially pay $1 million to demo this, and then the guy could decide not to sell it, not to do anything with it. Do we get to collect interest on our $1 million on that lien? So, because it could keep going for a very long time without anything being done, since you did just say it's private property, and the owner gets to decide?
Yeah, that's a good question. Maybe something the engineer can answer, but I'd say the, the alternative is that we just have a building that's, oh, we got somebody who can answer this?
Yes, the director?
Yeah, the alternative is, is a building that could take down our entire downtown. But, Ms. Luskey, are you able to answer that, that question about whether or not we can collect interest on a lien?
What will happen if the...
Pull closer, please.
Sure. What will happen if the property continues to be in default and does not pay their bill, even with the demolition fee? We will go into tax title. And when it moves into tax title, we will be foreclosing on it during that timeframe. At this point, tax title interest, according to the new law, is 8%, I believe, once you go into tax title after November 1st, 2024. So, there will be interest accrued.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. And now, we'll go back to the audience. There were no more questions online. Can you step forward, state your name and address, please?
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Arnie Feinberg, 250 Powell Street. And I believe my question was answered.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Feinberg. And were there any other questions in the audience? No other questions are in the audience?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Now, I'll accept a motion, or did you want to discuss this a little bit more? We should start wrapping this up, though.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion that we move forward with the order to, that the building be raised by the property owner, and authorize the, the town manager and his staff to take appropriate action to see that is done ASAP.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. McCrisky and seconded by Mr. Gito. All in fa...
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Mr. Gito.
I think, seeing I was the one who was sort of pushing against making a decision now, I, I would like to explain why I seconded the motion, which is that on, on hearing A, the, the part that, well, first of all, I know that it's going to be a four, it would be a four to one vote, so it might as well be a five to zero vote. But, the other parts of that are that we're now giving the owner an opportunity to appeal that decision. And the second part of that is, if it does go into foreclosure, then we're going to get 8%, which is much higher than we ever get in any other investment that we made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you seconded, and yet, that was, he always had his right to appeal, and that was listed in a letter that was dated specifically, that I see right away, April 7th, 2025. So, motion was made, seconded, we all voted, all in favor. We said it was unanimous. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? It was unanimous decision. Thank you very much. Moving to the next agenda item, and I returned the gavel. I returned the gavel back to you, Mr... I hear some voices online. Is that an echo?
Public hearing is closed.
No, Madam Chair.
Yes, the public session is over, sir.
Well, I've been trying to speak, but somebody kept muting me, and wouldn't let me speak during the public hearing. So, I, you know, I was, and I had to recall in to try to get past all this. So, I'm a bit frustrated that, you know, I wasn't able to speak, because I was muted.
Sir, the public hearing is over.
Yeah, well, like I said, it's, the process, I didn't think was well-done then, because I should have been not, shouldn't have been muted. This is John Stagnoni. I had some information that was pertinent to it, to the case.
We're moving to the next agenda item, sir. We have...
Yeah, I figured that way, yep. Great job, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I return the gavel to you.
Thank you very much. So, the most exciting part of our hearing tonight is, is up, this is where it's going to get really spicy. This is the 2025 Fall Town Meeting articles. We have a couple that came in, so we've got the schedule that Mr. Tisdale put together, and then we've got a couple additional ones that are on the side. And so, I want to kind of be mindful of making sure that everyone, that all of these are considered appropriately. So, if you'll bear with me, we might have to move through this just a little slowly to make sure that we can address all the questions. I'm going to start by, one of the newer articles that is on the schedule, but people might have some questions about, and there's some additional information I would like to provide, is Article 12. But, for the time being, I would just like to ask if anybody has any questions about 1 through 11, or 13 through 20, as listed on this, this chart of Town Meeting articles. Now's the time to ask questions on those. We're going to leave 12. Mr. Carrera provided an article that he'd like to have considered, and the schools have one they would like to have considered as well. But, but we'll just start with the ones that we all, we've all had a chance to read, we all know of. Mr. Carrera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on Article 3. It says, "To be determined." I think we should have some form of a number put in here, because I will not vote for a blank, that if this is that important, that it's in a Fall Town Meeting, somebody's got to have a number in their hip pocket. Give me just, whatever it is, I'm not locking you to it, but put it in. I'm done with placeholders that are blank, telling you right now.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Carrera, members of the Select Board. What we do is, we want to put in a budget adjustment, and the reason that we're asking this to be put in is, there are issues at the state level that we are being cognizant of, and they have already come back and told us that our air mocks are on hold. We had three air mocks, they're on hold, and any determinations for budget adjustments and potential 9C cuts will not be out until sometime in October. So, our job right now is to, you know, hope that nothing happens with the state budgets, but if something does, this gives us the ability to... but if something does, this gives us the ability to adjust our budgets, which is what will be required by the Department of Revenue going forward. In order to adjust our budgets, they would have to be adjusted prior to tax rate. So what will happen is, in the motion, is where any value would be. It is not to increase any budgets whatsoever. This would be if we have an unfortunate situation where we have budget reduction. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So what are, what are the airmarks? What are they talking? There's got to be a number?
There were three airmarks that are on hold. One is for the school, and I believe it's $186,000 for budget adjustments. The second one is for the 300th Committee, which there was an airmark for $100,000. And the last one, I apologize, I don't have the figure off the top of my head, but it was for fire department equipment. So those are three airmarks that are being held, and we will not know until October. That's just part of it, is the airmarks. The bigger issue is whether or not there could be supplemental budget adjustments down for the town. So we're just being conservative and putting a placeholder, because we don't want to have to go back should something happen and have another town meeting, because that's an extra expense. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Elizabeth again. What's the excess capacity number that's been recapped?
The excess capacity number for this past fiscal year was $55,000. 897 for 2026.
I thought we were holding on to almost 900.
That is eight, I'm sorry, it's 826,000, I believe it is, for excess capacity. So with that, even going through excess capacity, we would have to deal with the issue, and it would have to be dealt with, with town meeting.
The excess capacity, though, isn't what I went after before, which was estimated. This is the real money. It's sitting there on a shelf.
There, there's no money literally sitting on a shelf. The excess capacity from last year, which was at our tax rate that was certified in 20, December of 2024, I believe is roughly 826,000. I do not have that figure off the top of my head, but that is what I believe it was.
Well, I don't think we should panic if we have that money.
Well, we aren't panicking.
You're talking about 400,000, maybe. So you have 400 for a bump.
Well, that's just the airmarks, Mr. Carrera.
Right. That's what you just said was you were concerned about.
No, what I did inform the board is that the airmarks are currently on hold. Typically, we would have had our contracts by now, we would have entered into those contracts. What we're concerned about is the general budget going forward. If we don't get the airmarks, we do not get that grant funding. However, if there's what's called 9C cuts at the state level, that's a reduction to our state aid. And that's what we're trying to just be cognizant of, so that we are prepared should something come about. And it's, it is a placeholder, and there's no question about that. And if we don't need it, then we table it at town meeting or we withdraw it. We are working on the conservative side to make sure that we have everything we believe may come to fruition on the table at the town meeting. It's up to the board. You want to remove it? You remove it. You want to leave it? You leave it. Again, all these decisions are the decision of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions about Articles 1 through 11 and 13 through 20?
Would it be helpful if I talked about Item Number 12 and say that I would not put that forward?
Sure.
Do you want to do that afterwards?
I just want to, I want to make sure that, like, the stuff that we've had for a while.
Good enough. We'll do it.
Yeah, I just want to dispose of this. So if everyone's good, then we'll move on to Item 12. Mr. Gito, if you'd like to present on this or, or speak to it. Would you like to speak on, on Article 12?
Yes, I, the reason that I put this in was that I'd heard that, that we, we had overcrowding in some things that were going on at the senior center, and, I mean, some of the events that were going on. It didn't sound too good. And so I wanted to have the opportunity to find out what additional space we might need, because we need that as we put together a long-range plan. And it seemed to me to be something that we should address, because we have a lot of seniors that, that need places to go to do things and so on. And with increases in inflation, it makes it more difficult for people to go out and do, to go to dinner, to go to a movie, to go wherever they might go. I mean, people don't go to shows anymore, but, but, but just as an example. that being said, apparently the town manager went to talk with Janice Bruce today, and she said that everything was just fine there. I would have been interested in increasing the space, in increasing the programming for the Council on Aging, because I think that there are a lot of people that, that could use that. But given the fact that the director of the program says that there's no space needed, I'm not going to, to say, well, Janice doesn't know what she's talking about. Obviously, she does. And so I would respectfully withdraw that article.
Thank you. So that is withdrawal.
Mr. Chairman, I would defer to Mr. Tisdell as our acting town manager. Could you please read into the record what Mr. Coulter actually, I mean, the full scope and breadth of what he just, he said to all of us regarding this Article 12? Or, I have it on my phone.
Yeah.
I thought it's important that it be-
I was going to speak to this.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll just go through it.
The audience needs to know, at the very least, too.
So this is, this is, what I would say is, this is an area of, that I'm interested in pursuing, ultimately. I think, I think we do need to pursue this as a question, but we do have a couple of things that maybe make it, you know, not quite ripe enough to, to bring to market just yet. First of all, we don't know what the cost of that might entail. We don't have a scope of services that we've laid out. Janice Bruce, the director of the COA, wasn't sure that there, there was a need, but she also wasn't, I don't think, consulted in this question, so she didn't have a chance to really explore it. And it's not part of our capital plan. It probably should be part of our capital plan before we prioritize it ahead of everything that is on our capital plan. So those are the kinds of things where, not that this isn't an important and noble thing to do, it's just that we, we need to have a bunch of things answered before we bring this to town meeting. It's going to be very difficult to, to defend a capital purchase, a capital feasibility study for a capital purchase that isn't on our capital plan. The, the note that Mr. Coulter wrote, I'll, I'll read most of it. Unfortunately, so he's not here today because he has a cold. So unfortunately, I have come down with a cold. I'll be heading home before tonight's meeting. Mark is prepared to stand in for me. Thank you very much for doing that. This afternoon, I met with COA Director Janice Bruce. Neither she nor her board requested an article to perform a feasibility study to consider the cost of an additional, in addition to the senior center building. She made clear that the building is only 25 years old and that it meets her needs. She requested that she add, that we add to the capital plan the construction of an outdoor gazebo, so that functions, so that functions can be expanded to the outdoors. She will contact Mark to make this addition to the capital plan. I'd like to further note that no mention is made of the COA building addition in our capital plan. That, that is the tool that we use to prioritize projects. Finally, our residents appear very weary of additional borrowing at this time, particularly where a $300,000 feasibility study for the police station concluded that the cost of repairs and replacement of that building is more than twice our estimates. That, that project is now on hold. So those were the town manager's concerns. I share them, but I also have asked him to, to maybe dive a little bit deeper into this and by the Fall Town Meeting, see if, you know, if, if we can pull together the data necessary to, to make a recommendation. So, but for the time being, Mr. Gito, you're interested in pulling Article 12?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just pull that right now. So we have two additional motions that, to consider. One of them, I apologize, I don't think you guys have a copy of the, the school committee emailed it to me not long before our meeting here. But I, I will read it, and, and we can kind of decide how we want to go from here. This would be, this would be, I mean, we can make it 21, but it'd actually be 20 now, because we have to move all the numbers up, with 12 being gone. So it would be Article 20, theoretically. On behalf of the school committee, so this is a letter from Dr. Baeda. On behalf of the school committee, please see the proposed article for Fall 2025 Town Meeting below. One, to see if the town will raise an appropriated sum of money for the purpose of enhancing safety and security at Stoughton Public Schools, which may include, but is not limited to the installation of fencing, traffic control gates, and/or other safety or security purposes as determined by the superintendent, and to include labor materials and any other incidental costs. To fund this article, we propose closing the remaining funds in the following articles and use the sum to equal the amount of the proposed article. And then they have five previous articles from, looks like most of them are from May and November of 2024. There's a school parking lot, HVAC services, firewall, school vestibules, and phone equipment. The, those combined equal 107,734.54. The cost of the article itself, right now it's estimated at 63,212. So that is, that is their request. It did come in outside the deadlines we, we've requested, but well, within time for the board to make a decision as to whether or not they would choose to insert it. We don't have anybody from the school committee to answer questions, but to the extent that I'm able to, does anybody have any questions, then I'll do my best to answer. Seeing none, the last article is Mr. Carrera's, and I'll extend to you the same courtesy I offered Mr. Gito, if you'd like to speak to this. I'll leave it to you. If you'd like me to read it, I'm willing to, but.
If you, if you want to read it, then I'll explain it if you want.
Sure. So the, the article we received is-
It's in succession, how it would be if, if the article passes, would it be?
Sure, sure, sure. So I'm just going to read the article part, what kind of, this was all like, has to be decided by attorneys. So, so I'll just read the article. The article is "Under Ride," to see if the town will vote as a non-binding resolution to support an affirmative vote of the upcoming ballot question to reduce the amount of real estate and personal property taxes to be assessed for the upcoming fiscal year, and this, they labeled as "the underwrite." Mr. Carrera.
The reason why I brought this forward is because I knew there was excess capacity, and with the change in the 30 to the 20 year for the citizens, that if we went after, if this gets in, there'd be a motion by the board to resolve to support an affirmative vote of $800,000. That would help the residents make up the difference for the, for the year of the taxes that would come out, the way it gets spread across. And this takes place in other towns. I did get this from another town, and I, alls I did was change the word to Stoughton. So this has been done before. The Attorney Generals have voted, voted on it and passed it. So it's nothing, nothing surprising, but it's a hard thing to explain, but it's a way that on the rise, we talk about not that much percent, but with this, knowing that the money is off to the side, it passes, it helps the residents. They, they, they don't get taxed that amount. It's the best I can explain it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Madam Vice Chair?
Oh, Mr. Gito, and then I have a question.
Madam Vice Chair.
How would that, through you, Mr. Carrera, how would that work? And then through, then I have a, a follow-up question to our Director of Finance. How would that work? So how is, how has it worked in other towns, so they just?
I didn't think I was going to have to read all that. I didn't, I didn't bring it all. I do have the backup, but what, how it works is that you're asking to take and lower the levy to this amount, knowing that that money is already collected. And then it gets, it doesn't, it comes off, so that you don't have to pay it. But the way it breaks down is it will save the residents that increase from the 20 to the 30 over the, over the time of the, and you can do it every year. It can be made that it's a certain term, 10 years, or the life of the bond.
Then to you, Mr. Elizabeth.
Mr. Chair, to Vice Chair Roberts, Mr. Carrera, and the members of the Select Board and the audience, an underwrite not only has to go to town meeting, just like an override. An underwrite has to go to town meeting, and then town meeting can declare whether or not they want to do an underwrite for an X amount of dollars. It not only has to go to underwrite at town meeting, then you have to go to ballot question. This ballot question would have to be voted and completed by the time of our classification hearing, and our, in order for us to get our tax rate set for this year. And our classification hearing is scheduled for November 16th. November 16th is what we're scheduling the classification hearing for, number one. Number two, once you vote an override, it's permanent. It's not for one year, it's a permanent underwrite. So your taxes going forward will automatically reduce by the value of that underwrite. And it is, I can get information from the Department of Revenue, but anybody could look it up, that going for an underwrite is not recommended, because it is permanent and it does not change, and you will never be able to recoup the money that you just put in for an underwrite, even if we do have the excess capacity. So it would be beneficial that it be researched a little bit more. However, this is not my decision, this is the decision of the board. But I would, I would recommend, you know, if you're going to put it on, that there's a little bit of research done on this, we see what the outcome for a permanent override. As Mr. Carrera said, it's not a lot of money. So you've got an 800,000 underwrite, 800,000 at 70% is 600,000, and that approximate 600,000, these are approximations, that approximate 600,000 would be divided up by 5,000 residential taxpayers. So that's the type of impact you've had, you'd have. Any impact is beneficial, but I really think that a little bit more research, and we can look up the information on an underwrite. Mr. Carrera's information is, is very important for the residents. But again, that's up to the Select Board to make that decision. Hopefully that helped.
Mr. Chairman.
Just want to see you on it. Madam Vice Chair, do you have any further questions? I just want to see, Madam Vice Chair, do you have any further questions?
So the intent is either a one-time, Mr. Carrera, a one-time 800,000 for this upcoming fiscal year, or you, or did you say your intent? I, I didn't hear what you were saying, if the intent was for the life of that bond, which in this case, 20 years.
I was told you could attach it the way it would show up on the bond. That's how it would give the savings back to the people for the change in the year. And with the new growth coming in constantly, it'll back it up because we're standing to get, I don't know how much next year because of.
Industrial park?
Because of logistics park and stuff that are coming on. I mean, it's, it's, it's growing. I mean, and the economy is showing turnaround. So I don't, I don't think it's going to hurt. I don't, and I was never told that it was permanent. You can do an underwrite and it'll just be for that year and it goes away. So I don't, this is not an override where it's forever. You might have that confused because I know the underwrite is not permanent. You have to reaffirm them and it has to be passed by town meeting. That's why there's three movements here that I took directly from past stuff in another town. And I'll sit with you and I, and I have all the stuff. I'll lay it right out for you and you can call that town and say, maybe you did something wrong. Are you guys rounding? Because they do a lot of underrides in that town.
So I mean, the, so Mass General Law Chapter 59, Section 21CH defines an underwrite. And the Department of Local Services guidance on that is, is, an underwrite is a levy limit underwrite, decreases the amount of property tax revenue a community may raise in the year specified in the underwrite question and in future years. It decreases the community's levy limit and becomes part of the base for calculating future years' levy limits. It's, it's a permanent underwrite. You, you.
That is correct.
You don't upset. The result, actually, it says here, the result is a permanent, and permanent is underlined, it is a permanent decrease in the taxing authority. That, that is from the DLS Department, Division of Local Services, Mass Department of Revenue guidance called Proposition Two and a Half Ballot Questions, Requirements, Procedures from August 2017. Are there any further questions? Mr. Gito.
Not a question, but a comment. $800,000 is about the amount of money that we've been getting the last few years in new growth. I understand that we're going to have a larger new growth number this next year, but that new growth number's not going to continue year after year after year. We're probably going back to something that is much more like the $800,000. And I, I can't see any good reason to do that when what we're trying to do is, is have a good financial position. And the amount of money that is being saved is quite small relative to, to what we need to, to be dealing with in future years. I mean, we've got a lot of construction to be done. We do have a fire station, I mean, a police station. We do have a middle school. And to, to have a situation where we're saying, okay, we don't really need to raise the taxes, I, I think is not a wise thing for the Board of Selectment to do. I mean, the voters at town meeting on a year-by-year basis can determine how much money we're going to spend year by year. But I'm not sure that we should be binding future town meetings to a lower number than, than what we're allowed to have, because we're not going to recoup that other money, as was said. And we're not a rich community.
Are there any other questions for, for Mr. Carrera? I have only one, and it's just a minor one, just in the language of, of the article. I, I say this knowing that the article language is not the point, right? It's the, it's the motion, the ballot question. I checked the ballot question against what the statutory requirement is for the ballot question, and it's like, there might be like a word or two, you know, off, but it's more or less exactly what it would be. So the ballot question's good. But I had the, two questions. First, in the article, remind, just as a reminder, I know this is the end of the world if it, if it happens to be wrong, but you have in here the, the statement that it's a non-binding resolution. And that, that part, I'm not, I'm not sure, because it seems like this is, if this becomes like if something at the town meeting voted on, this would be binding. So I'm trying to figure, I'm just trying to understand your thoughts on that.
The wording "non-binding," the way I was told, is that it could be for fiscal year or fiscal years. That's the way I was told. It could be broken down. Now, you read it, you interpreted it from there, but I heard something that said something else, but I don't have that kind of stuff.
Sometimes fake, sometimes people works and sometimes.
But I mean, it's, it's up to the board. I saw it for once because it was working that way, and I asked, and I got the information and.
It's no problem. I just wanted to see if I can understand your thought, your thought on that.
But the non-binding was, was like key.
Okay. And the, the other question I had was just about the $800,000 figure. And I'm, I'm just curious, how'd you arrive at, at that particular number? Were you thinking?
The 800,000?
Yeah.
Because I knew it was staying in over there. The first time we were told it was 956, then it was 935. I don't have access to everything. And then it's not there, it's there, it's not, it's there because it was recapped. Elizabeth said it was. She just checked her number from 55 up to 800. So there you go.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have, if there's no further questions on this, then we sort of have all the articles laid out.
We don't have all the, oh, go ahead. We don't have the data.
I know, but.
Okay, go ahead.
So now we've got to take the next step, right? We've got a couple of steps we have Will you turn the mic on?
No, I don't. Thank you. I continue to not do that. So are we, are we going to talk about the school article? And are we going to talk about the, the Mill Street land donation? Is there something?
Yes. So if you bear with me for a second, I want to go through the, there's five things altogether that we have to do.
Okay.
And we'll do them in an order that's going to give us an opportunity to discuss these things.
Okay.
But that is also very much determined on the motions people make. So if people will make motions that, to push a bunch of things through, then, then not a whole lot we can do about that. But I, right now, I just want to lay out the process. We've got five things we have to vote on. First one, and we have, we have to move to insert articles and establish the order, however we want. The second thing we have to do is move to authorize town council and appropriate town staff to make clerical, typographical, or editor, sorry, editorial, but not substantive changes as may be necessary. The third vote that we need is, is to move to close the warrant. Number four, move to authorize and, and instruct appropriate town staff to post the warrant in accordance with state law and the town charter. And the fifth item is to move to set the date and time of annual town, sorry, special town meeting as per the charter. So those are the five votes we now have to take right now. We'll start with the first one, inserting articles. And that is where we decide which articles we want to insert and which ones we don't.
So have we voted on 1 through 20 excluding number 12?
If that's a motion someone wants to make.
So moved.
Okay. There's a motion to insert Articles 1 through 11 and Articles 13 through 20, but number them sequentially from 12 to 19. Is there a second?
Second.
So basically, we're taking at 12, and everything that's below it has to be offset up. So 13 becomes 12, 14 becomes 13, all the way down to 20, which becomes 19. Oh, jeez. You might not have the most, here you go.
It must be this one here.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So that is, that's the order. So there's a motion by Mr. Gito to insert Articles 1 through 11 as listed, and then 13 through 20, but listed as 12 through 19. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
I, I would like the record to show that while I made the motion, I don't support all of these articles. I just think that they should be inserted.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So on the motion to insert those articles, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Joe is absent.
Joe is absent.
Aye. Okay. So Mr. McCrisky votes aye as well. So that is unanimous to insert those.
Mr. Chairman, so in this case, the Mr. Carrera's would be item number 21?
Yeah, we, no, so.
Okay, we gotta, we're gonna get there.
Give me a moment.
Okay, give me a moment. Hold my horses.
So the next one we're going to discuss is the school, I'm doing this in the order in which I receive them. It's arbitrary, but it's, it's, we got to pick some, some way to do it. And, and so the next article, which would be Article 20, would, if the, the Select Board chooses to insert it, is the articles provided by the schools. And this is to see if the town will raise an appropriate sum of money for the purposes of enhancing safety and security.
I move you to insert that article, and if you want me.
Thank you.
If you want to continue to read it, go ahead.
No, no. I was trying to keep the record clean. Okay, so there's a, a motion to insert the school's article as Article 20. Is there a second?
I'll second that. That's the 63,212?
Yes.
Yes, I'll second that.
So there's a motion was made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. And then our last item, which would be Article 21, is the article proposed by Mr. Carrera.
What about the Mill Street article? Is some, is, is, before we. I think that.
Is that not in, on our list of 20?
Was it 20?
Yeah, it's in there.
It is Article?
Yeah, it's Article 18. Listed here, but we would just now have numbered it 17, but it's accept donation of five parcels of land off Mill Street.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't read that.
It's no problem. It might have been recent, recently added. So that one's in there already. So the, the last one is Mr. Carrera's article. This is a, for a underwrite. Is there a motion to insert?
So made.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Lacking a second, the, the motion fails. And so we have inserted all of the articles. The next is to authorize town meeting, sorry, to authorize town council and appropriate town staff to make clerical, typographical, or editorial, but not substantive changes as may be necessary.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gito. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The next is a motion to close the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Fourth, move to authorize and instruct appropriate town staff to post the warrant in accordance with state law and the, and the town charter.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gito. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCrisky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I voted, any, any against? Any abstentions? Okay. And the last one, I want to make sure we get this date correct. The, the date that we're calling for the town meeting, what day is that?
October 27th with a backup of October 29th.
October 27th, 2025, and usually starts at 7:00 PM. Is that right?
Correct.
7:00 PM. Okay. So the motion would be to set the date as October 27, 2025, and the time as 7:00 PM for the.
So moved.
Special town meeting, or fall town meeting, however you'd like to call it, as per the charter.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gito. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. And that is all the business on our agenda. So if there's a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Mr. Gito, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The, the time is 9:47. The meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.